...how court works. Your sins precious name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Don. Would everybody please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, by the way. Now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
We should have a full courtroom every...
Sounds great.
Thank you. So all you kiddos, y'all learned the pledge and it really shows. So thank y'all for being here this morning. Moving on, agenda item number four is recognition of visitors. This is not public comment. If there's anybody that wishes to make a public comment, hang tight, we'll get to you at agenda item number six. But this is recognition of visitors. This is an opportunity if anybody would like to identify themselves for our record. You may do so at this time. Please do so by raising your hand and I will recognize you, but there's absolutely no compunction that you do so. Is there anybody that'd like to identify themselves? Yes ma'am, in the back.
I would like to identify the Jones students that are here today. They are members of the FMC Elementary Ambassador Club and they are our young leaders who are going to be community leaders.
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you all for being here this morning. Hopefully you've had a good morning so far. Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. All right, is there anybody else that'd like to identify? Yes ma'am.
Just wanted to stop by. I'm Shannon Bierstaff. I'm the newly hired president for the Beagle Chamber of Commerce and wanted to introduce myself a little bit. Not all of you have been here about nine weeks. So I'm trying to get by to say to meet everyone, but just wanted to stop in and say hello.
Thank you so much. That's new stuff. Yes, sir, in the back.
Jonathan Wilson, I'm here to represent Melissa with Surratt County County for the shopping implemented help.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Windows, and thank you for being here. Yes, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
This is Bruce Seal with the local VFW in Beagle here to make an invitation for all commissioners and show you how we support the community.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here, sir. Thank you for your service. Is there anybody else? Okay, moving on to agenda item number four, our five commissioners' court opening remarks. I can never remember which way we go, Commissioner.
I'm Flip Corrigan.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you Judge. First of all, I guess I gotta change my order a little bit here, but I'd like to recognize one of our own commissioners for bringing in these young bright minds to court. This is great. Thank you for doing that, Commissioner. Commissioner, do what? Just want to recognize your efforts. Good job. Also, I want to identify, we had some complaints of high-speed drivers that were going passing through Tynan. The citizens were concerned about the high-speed. What can we do about it? So I met with Texas to see if we could reduce the speed a little bit to enhance our safety. However, the only way can be done unless we do a long study and determine how long, whether it can be done or not. So, and again, I'm just having a refresher. I was told when I first came on the court that sometimes things don't go as fast as you want them to go. Anyhow, on a positive side, I reached out to Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chief Deputy Jones, and he made some recommendations of maybe doing a little bit more patrols in the area. And I got some positive feedback, which we don't normally get too much, but I want to recognize Patricia Trevino, Deputy Patricia Trevino. They're doing a great job and helping mitigate some of the speeds coming through that area. And since then, it's kind of slowed the traffic down a little bit. So, so great. That's a good thing. Also, I'd like to recognize Ray Long-Gordia here. He showed up today. And also Jonathan, thanks for attending, for addressing a lot of issues in South Beach County and promptly addressing those issues as they come up. So, thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. Kind of some general information. Last week I attended the hurricane conference there in Rockstown. One of the key things to note is that we're going to be expecting a very active year in hurricanes. So need to have our guards up when that situation occurs. Hopefully not, but it's just a matter of time. Had a great workshop. We had both the county and city team members were there. At the end of the session, I had made a recommendation to Ryan to host a workshop between the county and the city. Just ensure we have our easy cues up to date on how we manage an emergency situation and make sure that we have the proper tools and equipment in place should something happen. Hopefully not, but it's good to have that communication. We have a lot of new team players like myself that could learn from us. This week I also finalized my last mentoring session with one of the Barnhart students. Great session, great kids. They're doing a great job of promoting and assisting with scholarships. My last session with these individuals, I basically engaged them on how to set goals for the future, goals for today, and help them set up the guidelines and doing some good smart goals for when they go to college. And the good thing is they're, they have a bright future ahead of them. I participated in ELC meetings to discuss status of the project and results and design issues that we have with drawings. Some of these issues are around lights, ADA doors, adding some ramps to the doors. This team was facilitated both by Grant Works and our own Jennifer Rana. Meeting went well. Meeting notes are being done, gentlemen. So we have a good track record of what's being done and some of the challenges that we're coming across. As far as the actual status, the exterior frame has been completed. The building itself, interior framing is moving along very quickly. The administrative side, most of the framing is done. And then tomorrow, the AC contractor is going to start setting up his ductwork. Attended the salary committee meeting, which was facilitated by Jennifer Rana. And thanks to Michelle for updating our salary meeting books. That's a good tool as we go to each meeting. The repairs at the juvenile probation facilities is nearly complete. All the structural work has been done on the floor. The only thing that's lacking right now, we're gaining some prices on completing the floor. We weren't able to mask the floor correctly, plus we had some other issues with this, we're getting some prices to basically finish that floor. And then this afternoon, a meeting was with Ms. Franco to discuss some other maintenance issues that she, that she's brought to my attention. So hopefully nothing major, I don't think that we can't fix. Also, I just want to remind everyone that the B County Appraisal District will be sending out notices today about the new appraisal values. So should you agree with that appraisal value, I highly recommend that you make a little bit of time, go to appraisal district office, and sit down and understand how this whole process works. It's pretty entailing. It's pretty daunting to recognize and how it gets started from the controller's office, how it gets pushed down to appraisal district, and then down to us. And it's a little bit overwhelming when you look at it from a bigger picture, but it really is once you understand that whole process. So that's good. As far as Skidmore, I'm happy to say that we're making some great progress to enhance the safety at the intersection of 181 and 359. What we did is we improved the visibility of coming into that intersection, which is a pretty dangerous intersection. By working with Texas, we were able to remove all the trees and cut the grass. So the visibility is much, much better. We have additional safety issues that are going to be addressed, such as some additional lighting. And also, they're going to be putting some LED signs to notify people that are coming to a stop. And hopefully it'll prevent some of these vehicles from going into the resident that lives directly across the street. So that's good. From the South Beach County Emergency Service District, number four, was noted by the president that we needed to add a new board member. And Judge, I may need some assistance as far as the protocol, but they wanted to nominate Rick Brokaw as one of the new board members. Does that have to go to the board?
You would ask this question in front of a big audience, would you?
I'm sorry, Judge.
Yeah, I think we could probably get that done.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, Judge. And with that, I'll...
That's excellent. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, videos?
All right. These past two weeks, we did have a salary committee meeting that's led by our chairman, Jennifer Rana. And HR was there to show us some new laws and new rules that are going to come in with the exempt and non-exempt pay scales.
Is this good or bad? Just okay? Challenge.
Challenge. You got it. We said good or bad. That was... It was challenging. So we got to come up with someone on July the first of the week, and then someone January the first. So we have to, right before budget, we're going to have to hit that pretty hard there. So... And then I had a meeting with Ryan Garza because he had the TAC risk assessment done here at the courthouse. And at the Justice Building, there's a few items that need to be addressed. The stairs up on the front, the sidewalks that are, you know, for the, for the risk assessment. And a few other items, some tiles that are in the hallway that we got recommendations to, not mandatory, but recommendations to take care of. All right. So I got with Johnny Fugiva and with Ryan. So we're working on that right now. Meeting with the sick leave pool. We had one person that requested that. So we had that one person didn't come in, but we did approve this sick leave request. And then our bridge on 421, it's at about 98% complete. I talked with the engineer, Nick Novasov from Corn City. They're going to get with the contractors that built that and with Roden Bridge to make sure that all the signage is put up, that all the low-water crossing fences for the two ranches on each side are also put up and get that taken care of. So we should be pretty much complete with that one, probably by next month, 100%. And with that, I'll pass it to Commissioner Dooley.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Judge. Couple of interesting phone calls over the weekend. Had a phone call about a rough county road, potholes, almost running off the road. So I'm one of these kind of people when somebody brings something to my table, I go look at it. I want to go see what it is. Well, you have potholes, and then you have what we call scabbing, where you have patches that are beginning to come up and it leaves a divot in the road. It's about this deep. You go across it. Well, there was quite a bit of scabbing in one area of this road. The individual that called me said that they were driving down the road, there were a bunch of kids, and almost ran off the road. And then she said they were doing a little over 60 miles an hour. How fast? 60 miles an hour down the road. Speed limit is not posted when a county road is 50. Most of our county roads are posted 30, 35. And I'm not going to say it's anybody's fault. We're going to take care of the road. Don't get me wrong. But if you slow down on the county roads, they're narrow, they don't have a median painted, there's cattle, there's deer, there's hogs. Slow down. It's not, it takes much longer to get your vehicle repaired than it does to arrive at a location two minutes later than you would have. So slow down. Had another phone call. This one is more disconcerting than the first one about a wind farm that's leasing property off Wildcat Lane and 673. And it's east Wildcat, which if that wind farm goes in, we'll be able to see it from Beagle. Now, those of you that go back and forth to Corpus or Fort Monro on a regular basis know how all those red lights are blinking every night. There's hundreds of them down there now. So far, we've been lucky in Beagle and we haven't seen them. If this one goes in, it's going to be in our backyard. Now, what I told the individual was something that we were able to do with a wind farm out in Mineral, they put radar on it. So the lights only come on when there's aircraft in the area. And I asked them to talk to their attorney, who was putting together the proposal, to see if they could possibly get that put in that agreement. And it's in the works now. Nothing's been finalized, but there's a company leasing that property off of 673, which is the Beagle to Mineral Highway, Wildcat Lane, which is out about five miles from Beagle. And it's a little higher, so we won't be impacted by that. The only other thing I'd like to bring up, Commissioner Oliveris and I attended a meeting in Mineral. It was local people there. He was very... He was morbid. They had a lot of questions, and I appreciate you coming to the precinct to go with me.
Enjoyed it. Thank you.
And everything else is pretty routine, routine calls. Roden Bridge has done a great job. We appreciate all the work they're doing. And with that, sir, I'm going to pass it to my right.
All righty. Had a busy couple of weeks. First, I need to give some thanks to a few people. Michelle Preston, Amy Gaetan, Arturo Gaetan, Rachel Casades, Enrique Casades, Angelina Ramirez, Jaylen Lopez, Robbie Guerrero, Adriana Casades, Vinnie Chaparria, and Joseph Chaparria, Sophie Garcia, Ray Solis, Elvia Sines, and Daniel Sines. All these guys, they got together and we all went up to go clean the San Pedro Cemetery. It was bad, it needed it. And everyone got together and we knocked it out in about three hours. So that was good. It was definitely showed the... More hands make light work, for sure. So thank you guys for helping that. Also, thanks Robbie Guerrero and Daniel Mendez. We had been asked to clean up an overgrown lot on the corner of East Kennedy and North Claiborne. Got that done for an elderly couple. Texas, it's been a long time in the coming, but they finally got the mesquite tree down on 181 and Oak Lane. So thank you guys for that. It's been a long time. They had to do their studies and whatnot. So anyway, got it done. Also, Texas, they've got their contracting company out and they started paving and fixing the edges on Farm Market Road 1349. So that's being done. They've been working on that for a long time now and getting to the finishing points on that. Roden Bridge, thank you guys. You guys got 523 and 524 done. Appreciate that. And then Kinkor Lane, I think you guys got three quarters of it done. And then Will Chuck didn't show up to location for them to get it finished up. So that should be getting done this week. Right? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Got with Ray also on some brush pickup in Blueberry Hill and off of Beagle Road. Summer's almost here again. So I've teamed up with Blue Ribbon and the B County Board of Realtors. We're going to do a fan drive again. And at this time, we're going to do, we're just taking fan donations or monetary donations to purchase fans. And once we get all the fans in, or a big group of them in, then we're going to announce when they'll be ready for distribution. Because last time they did it, we did it, we got fans in and people were coming in and, hey, you got any fans? And we're out right now. So we just want to get a big supply before we say, hey, we're ready to distribute. If you want to drop by and drop off a fan or a monetary donation, their address is 1701 North Frontage Road here in Beagle, as is the Blue Ribbon Feed Store. Or you can call them at 361-392-3333. The easiest way to remember is 361-392-FEED. Attended the St. James Beagle fundraiser at the expo. It was, it was good. They had about 600 people that showed up for that. And they had asked me to call Beagle. That was a lot of fun. That was a lot of fun. So we're ready to do it again. Did you say 600?
About 600 showed up.
Wow.
Yeah. Good crowd. Good crowd.
Also, I think Robbie Guerrero again. We had a lady that reached out to me on 710 South Morris Street. And she had a, she needed to get a lot of stuff cleaned up, and we were able to assist her in doing that. So thank you, Robbie. Also, as contacted by City Councilman Benny Quintero, he, there is an elderly lady that's on Minnesota Street and her property is really bad. So he reached out to me to know if I would help him getting that cleaned up. And he was going to talk to the city about being able to dispose of everything at the city yards and helping there. That's in the works also. I attended a meeting this past Friday on how to properly and effectively protest your property taxes. It was a really good meeting. Commissioner Oliveris was there. It was presented by Michael Belonda and Rafa Veyar. It was very informative. And I know since, like Commissioner said, the statements are going to go out this week. So those guys, they said they'd be more than happy to come back several times if they wanted to. But I would encourage everyone to go to it. It was a lot of information. Very good information. So... And then let me give a big thank you to Robert Kent, too, and his efforts in keeping the courthouse grounds the way he does. There, it looks outstanding. And the B with the yellow flower. And that was just... So thank you, Robert. You're doing an excellent, excellent job. And last but not least, something I'm very proud of. This past Saturday, I was presented with the gathering of the state of Texas recognizing my exemplary leadership in serving the people of B County by Senator Marvin Montoya. That was, that was a real honor. It was awesome. With that, I will turn back to Judge. Thank you so much, Commissioner. To those to you. And for everybody in the audience, your commissioners, they do work really hard. You normally don't see what they do. Some commissioners, their interfacing with the public is maybe greater than others, but that doesn't mean that each one of the commissioners that's sitting up here is not every day out there doing what they can to improve the lives of everybody in the county. And I really greatly appreciate all of their collective efforts. Happy belated Mother's Day to all our mothers on behalf of the commissioners' court. We hope everyone had a wonderful day. If you didn't, we hope today is a good day. And I think that's all I had. I had a couple other things. Oh. So everybody that's online and everybody in the courtroom understands, may this state come before. We don't even get into it. The B County Appraisal District is not an arm of your county government. It's an arm of the state of Texas. It's a misdemeanor. And I don't want anybody to get confused to think that we have some sort of direct order side control or authority. It is completely independent and autonomous, except for the appointment of board directors to their, to their board. And then we vote, and we have votes according to the percentage of tax levy, as opposed to 100% of the tax levy. So we are taxing jurisdiction. We assess a tax rate, which is applied to your evaluation. Your evaluation is done by the state of Texas. Moving on to agenda item number six, public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to address Commissioner's court? Well, Sheriff Selfmade, come on down.
I just want to take just a moment. We, we see a lot of things happen in the county and we try to recognize what we can. But a lot of times, there's, there's people out there that are really doing some great things and they don't get any recognition. It just came to our attention this past Friday at the Pedestal Elementary School. There's a teacher there, Cynthia Hesseltime. I've never met her. Some of you may know her. We wanted to have her here today, but they're on a field trip. But she had a kid approach her Friday morning that couldn't, it was choking, couldn't breathe. And she ended up doing the hind leg maneuver on him and was able to get a piece of candy this life. Kid was fine. And really, that's the end of the story, but there's a whole lot to that, you know? Like right now, this week, all of our deputies, all of our employees, actually, are going through CPR, AED training, and it'll also be choking and stuff. And that's why we encourage that in our junior deputy programs and everywhere else. The point I want to make is you never know when an emergency is going to come up and who's going to be there to be able to save the life. And in this case, it was Miss Hesseltime, but it could be any other. So I'd really like to encourage everyone, take these classes, get certified, get trained in it, and be ready to help someone possibly save a life. But I'd just like to recognize her as a teacher.
Thank you so much.
Obviously.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Sheriff, appreciate that. Kudos to y'all. I saw on Facebook this morning, I had a big cooperative multi-county bus. It had some local... Research fighters?
It was really a goalie.
Well, good job. All right. Any other, anybody else want to make public comment? Yes, sir, please come in.
My name is Bruce Seal. As I said, stated before, I'm with the local VFW in 9170 and Motorcycle Group Unit 35. We are putting on our second annual bull riding event in June, June 22nd, that will start about 6:00 PM. And it'll be at the expo center again this year. We had a very nice turnout last year. We'd like to extend an invitation to everyone, please come join us. Veterans, the VFW is here to serve veterans and their families. Now, we make, this is a fundraising event for us, so we may do so. We try to provide veterans and their families benefits, needed care, the things that they, the things that they will need in the future. We are, we will be at the bull riding event this year. We will also be having mutton busting for our young, so they can come out and try to ride. I know most of them think they can't. I'll put it that way. I have, of course, we are always looking for sponsorship from the city, from anybody, individuals. I have sponsorship paperwork and I have flyers for the bull riding. Anybody would like to join us? Have any questions, please contact the VFW or any veteran that's gone off to the VFW. People would be happy to let you know about it and carry on. Do you want to announce the date? Pardon, sir, announce the date on here? No, announce the date.
When is the debate at June 22nd?
June 22nd. It starts, starts right at 6:00 PM.
And what's the telephone number for the VFW?
Pardon me?
What's the telephone number for the VFW?
Uh, that one. Honestly, I've got one of them smartphones that went to college and I didn't. So it has those phone numbers in there. I can give you my phone number, my personal cell phone number.
No, don't do that. Go out. New loan opportunities.
Home warrants.
Home warrants, yes, yes, yeah. Just Google VFW and reach out. Thank you so much for being here this morning, sir. Really appreciate everything you guys do for the community. And it sounds good. Have any of you kiddos ever done mutton busting? All right. Did you do good? All right. We got, we got one right here. We got a ringer. One second. Commissioner?
The phone number to the VFW is 35-361-358-1331.
Got it. Voice made the radio.
Good job.
Think I've heard them in some lawyer commercials before. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Anybody else like to address Commissioner's court this morning? Okay, thank you all very much. Hold on.
Okay, now we're gonna start cooking with gas, everybody. Agenda item number seven, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioner's court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote, without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or county judge.
Move to approve and comment.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Commissioner, would you have the floor?
Yes, sir. Looking over our bills, our inmate medical services. This last month was a little over $41,800. One individual was over $18,000. I understand it's probably chemotherapy?
Yes, sir.
That's what I understand. What we might wanna explain to the, the audience is that once an inmate is incarcerated in a county jail, we're responsible for their medical care. So just this last month, $41,800 for medical care for, I'm looking at about 10 or 12 inmates. So it is a, something that the law says we have to do. That's all. That's all I have. I just wanna bring, I just wanna bring up everybody's attention that this could get really expensive real quick.
It can, and it is an obligation. That's part of it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Discussing consideration on the following items. Agenda item number eight, approve the appointment of two board members to the Christus Spahn Hospital Board of Directors tabled during the, what's actually, okay. Tabled during the special call meeting held on Monday, April 22nd, 2024. That is a, an error on my part. I, I missed that. This is not an appointment to, of board members to the Christus Spahn Hospital Board of Directors. It is a local advisory committee board appointment. It's a very important group. They are our primary interface with Christus Spahn. As an entity, Christus Spahn manages and operates our local hospital. And these, these openings have been up for a little while. I'd open the floor. Any, any commissioners have any recommendations? Yes, sir.
I have one. Mr. Allen Burkett has been very far.
He will, sir. That's for all that. Yeah. Somebody else recommended Mr. Burkett. I think, believe, our commissioner actually called him to see if he did.
I did, I did, I did.
Are there any other recommendations? Commissioner Olivas?
Yes, Judge, I have liked to express my interest in serving on that board.
Excellent. I had Tino Olivas and Alan Burkett. Are there any other, anybody else have any other ideas? I know I didn't do this formally. It's, it's not quite that formal, but I, I'll, I'll kinda formalize it up a little bit. If there's no further, I'll go ahead and close nominations. And do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Alan Burkett and Commissioner Tino Olivas to the Christus Spahn?
I have a motion to approve of Mr. Burkett, Mr. Olivas to the, to the, to the.
I have a motion, I have a second, second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'd like to thank you both for your willingness to, to be appointed and to participate. And hopefully, I know Commissioner Olivas, you're gonna learn a whole lot about the interaction between local government and a large hospital entity. So thank you, Tino, both. And if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number nine, approve 2025 B County resolution authorizing submission of grant application to the Texas Indigent Defense Commission for the Indigent Defense Improvement Grant Program. So, gentlemen, this is my agenda item. What we have, like, we don't have a grant. We do. Would you like to present?
Will we read the resolution?
No, don't worry about it. It's a, I think, I think the resolution is in our.
I can read for later.
No, no, ma'am. What I'll, what I'll tell commissioners, gentlemen, these numbers, and for the public, TIDC is an arm of the state of Texas. They provide grant programs to counties to provide indigent defense programs for the community. Indigent defense is if you get charged with a crime, New Haven County, and you cannot afford an attorney, we have an entity that will provide that attorney for you. So it's a public defender's office. Cost rises, they go up. We all know that. It's, it's one of the realities of life. And this year, the Texas Rio Grande Public Defenders Office, which is split off from Texas Rio Grande Valley, their civil arm, has requested a slight increase, I think overall at $70,000 to $90,000. Is that about right?
About right.
From last year to this year, they do have excess budget funding from last year. So we won't actually see an increase in our share. And when I say our share, what happens is we have a, our TRPD has a budget of about $1.5 million that they, that they need this year. And B County, Live Oak County, McMullen County pay a portion of that, and it's 40%.
Forty?
Fifty. A little bit more, 40, 50%. And the state of Texas pays the other half. It's a great benefit to the community because it provides us with high-quality attorneys who are solely focused on public defense in the absence of having a public defender's office. Our district judges, our county court of law judge, myself, if any arises, would have to appoint a private lawyer from the bar. B County has a very small legal bar. In fact, all of our local counties have very small legal bars, which means we'd be trying to pull attorneys up from Corpus Christi. The economics of public defense are such that those attorneys aren't compensated very much for their services as a public defender. So to pull them all the way up from Corpus creates a hardship of which many attorneys are not very interested in subjecting themselves to. So we kill many birds with one stone by participating in a public defender program. The increase is understandable. Our, our group is, TRPD is continuing to try to find ways to improve the efficiency and the efficacy of the service that they provide in these ongoing challenging times of drawing attorneys into rural communities to serve these roles. Are there any questions, discussions, identity, motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 10, approve request to use courthouse grounds for the annual Chalking for Mental Health event hosted by Serenity Counseling. Do we have a presentation this morning? We all support it. I'll tell you right now.
Oh, so much.
I don't want you to be nervous. Just tell us everything you need.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Laura, just the honor and blessing of being here today and representing Serenity Counseling Services. And of counting, we are hopeful for the date of September 28th is what we're hoping for. We have a wonderful fundraiser. It's called Chalking for Mental Health. And it is a collaborative event that incorporates other facilities and organizations in the community advocating for mental health. Some people see mental health as somewhat of a deficiency. Sometimes it can be an embarrassing concept for someone to ask for mental health and services. But we wanted to normalize that and we are just so excited to have this event. Basically, we are asking for the use of the premises of the courthouse so that we can block off different areas on the surrounding ground and have competition. And so we have different age brackets for people to be able to chalk and we provide the chalk and we provide the spaces and block everything off. And everyone just can, we can just chalk wonderful, just encouraging words and maybe Bible verses or just, just something that's inspirational to other people. It's a wonderful event and we are just grateful for the use of it the last three, uh, two years. Since we are 30 years to use it. And so we're just happy to do that again.
Thank you so much. I know one or more of the commissioners may have some comments they'd like to, they'd like to make. Before we get into that, would you please just state your name for our record?
Melissa Gilbert.
Gilbert?
Gilbert.
Gilbert, Ms. Gilbert, thank you so much for being here this morning. In years past, there's been a necessity or a request to utilize electricity, specifically to have a, a lectern or some type of presentation on courthouse steps. Do you anticipate that need begin this year?
We are hopeful for that. We will be sitting in a stage area where we can have MC those and make the whole day fluid. And so we would, we would love the, the use of your, just for free.
Thank you, ma'am. And, and gentlemen, I think, I think any motion that would be made, we would want to include the presence of maintenance. I'm not sure if we, you know, W. Pointer? Oh, gee, gee, sorry. If in years past, have, have, have y'all been present as well or just maintenance?
I think it's maintenance.
Okay.
With the courthouse, we don't open the courthouse.
Right. We're gonna open it so that we can like in an outlet. So the courthouse won't be open for the use of restrooms and, and whatnot, but, but we will have to access it to provide electricity. And the dates are, is September 28th is what you're looking for?
That's what we're hoping for.
Okay, excellent.
And we also are to be looking into the use of two quarter potties and a washing station. And also, I'd like to get to address this last year. I know I wasn't there personally, but I heard there were some issues with the timeliness of them taking the quarter potties away. We are using a different company this year, so that will be addressed in more time here.
Excellent. Well, you know, what you guys do and what you provide to the community is excellent. And minor needs is like that pale in comparison to the benefit of what you are providing. So thank you very much. And commissioners, have any, any commissioner?
Generally, I'd like to say, Commissioner, please, now we're, we're honored to have been judges at the last one. And you cannot believe what these people can produce with a little bucket of chalk sitting on a paper. It is outstanding. Some of the stuff was just, it was such beautiful artwork. You, you can't believe it. With different colored chalk. And I think it went on down to like three-year-olds or four-year-olds. And they all had their, their square that they had to, they were confined to a certain area. But some of the stuff that we saw was, is, you hate for them ever to drive over it and mess it up or drain because it was beautiful. It was gorgeous. I hope that you guys get the newspaper out there and take a bunch of photos because I'm not sure it was covered like it should have been, in my opinion. It was outstanding because some of the people, they would sit in the middle of their, their square and start drawing and, and it was, it was perfect. It was absolutely perfect, Judge.
You are referring not specifically, well, but specifically to Commissioner Lenny's entry. You're right. Didn't you have an entry?
Yeah, he was in there.
This was all separate.
That was a palm tree and.
No, if I sat that square, I would take up the entire square.
I just want a picture of you sitting on the asphalt with a bucket of chalk.
I'll do it this time.
Yes. Yeah, we should have competition. Y'all should have competition. Somebody have me a judge.
I'll try to get that one, Judge.
We, we were judged a square there.
Very decently.
Ms. Gilbert, do you have any?
Well, I do have, I do have a tentative agenda that I'd like to give to you guys.
Absolutely.
So we're gonna have just more events. They are not planned yet. We have several meetings waiting out for September, but we are hoping to double in profit. And if we raise our goal, our goal is $40,000 this year, we raised $15,000 and led a net profit of $14,000. So we're hoping for $30,000 profits, which would equal to 600 hours of counseling services for those who would know, who would not otherwise be able to receive counseling services.
If, if anybody watching or in the, in the audience today, or parents of any children in the audience today, were interested in participating or in sponsoring, how would they get in touch with the organization?
Yes, so we have our website, serenitycounselingservices.org. We also have our phone number, 361-350-8088. And you can talk to myself or Linda or any of the other staff and we will be happy to direct you to the right place. But we're gonna have, as this comes, we have a Facebook page that you're welcome to follow and we'll have all the different information and deadlines and things like that coming up soon.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gilbert. Are there any other questions?
Can we go to that phone number again for the audience?
Yes, sir. 361-350-8088.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, hearing no comments, I take entertaining motion to approve.
Judge, I'd like to motion to approve this event on September 28th, excluding the use of electricity in the courthouse grounds.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, ma'am, once again. Moving on to agenda item number 11, approve release of lien in reference to the Texas Community Development Block Grant, Texas CBPG program number 7216015, for property located at 267 Beltry Street, Beeville, Texas. This is my agenda item. I know we have this ran in here as well to, to discuss it. Should there be any questions? The long and short of it is several years ago, there was a grant program, I'm not sure if it was a state or federal grant program, but it, it provided an opportunity for renovations, right, to existing houses with a commitment to, to remain in that house. So you couldn't obtain the grant and have government money revamp your property and then sell it for a tidy profit quickly thereafter. You had to remain in the house and, and if you did over a series of years, five to be exact, then the entire loan, because it was a formal loan document, mortgage, deed of trust type of situation, would be forgiven. And that's the stage that we're at. I know these homeowners, we have several on the agenda this morning, they've been waiting patiently, quite some time for us to forgive their, their loans. And that's what these releases of lien will do. Commissioner, do you have anything further to add to that?
No, sir. That was very well put. I'm just very excited to have these folks finish up the process.
And I'm sure they're excited as well. Any questions, Commissioner's court, a moment?
Housekeeping, now.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Jump, Commissioner Lenny, got in. Everybody jumping in on that one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 12, approve release of lien in reference to the Texas CBPG program number 716015, for property located at 340 Treptile Street, Beeville, Texas. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. And agenda item number 13, approve release of lien in reference to the Texas CBPG program number 7216015, for property located at 349 Treptile Street, Beeville, Texas.
To approve.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 14, approve district attorney's request to use county credit card to pay for attorney's bar dues. I have a motion to approve. I have a second. Any further discussion? This is largely housekeeping, folks. So sometimes we have agenda items, this is for the younger kids in the audience, but anybody may not be so familiar with what we do. Oftentimes, many of the agenda items on our agenda are what we call, what Commissioner Witt called, housekeeping matters. And that's a, that's a really good moniker for them because it's matters that we have to address, but they're not matters of contention. They're matters of routine, usual business. And we have information in our packets, which are also available online, backup information, so that we have an understanding of, of what's going on. And it's easy for us to make a quick, a quick motion as long as I stop talking. I have a motion and a second. No further discussion, I'm certain. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 15, approve election administrators' request to earn payment of overtime instead of earning county comp time for non-county elections that are paid by other, other political subdivisions. We have our elections administrator checks. There you go. Laura Warnet. Before she gets started, I just wanna, I wanna highlight, I wanna take away her punchline. The specific situation that she's asking for us to make an exception for, situations in which other taxing jurisdictions other than B County would have to pay, pay for this overtime. So Ms. Warnet.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. Laura Warnet, county elections educator. As the judge so elegantly explained, I'm not asking for the county to pay out what my office staff earns during county elections. This would only apply to elections that we hold for the other political subdivisions. Technically, it would, it would keep them from earning time on another person's bill and the county being responsible for payment. That's, that's the long and short of it. So we have the primaries, the primary runoff, the city of Beeville, in the spoken, in the school districts and stuff that that would apply to.
Are there any questions? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Like to thank you, Ms. Warnet, for bringing this to our attention. And I think it does make sense that the county, the taxing jurisdictions that we're providing election services for are actually paying for those rather than coming off as a hidden cost to the county.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Moving on to agenda item number 16, approve expo request for auditorium. Be waiver from the Boys and Girls Club for their annual casino night on Saturday, June 8th, 2024. Mr. Court Hill, how are you, sir?
Doing well, sir. How about yourself?
Doing great. Thank you. Commissioners, Judge, once again, we just really appreciate the.
Commissioners, Judge, once again, we just really appreciate the opportunity to utilize facilities. Our casino night is the one fundraiser that we do for the Boys and Girls Club of Beville. This goes towards some of our operating and some of our programming needs. The biggest thing whenever we're out there, we apply for funding through many different sources, but a big thing that we always get asked about is how does your community support the club? You know, if we're gonna support it from a foundation or a corporate standpoint, are you benefiting from support within your community? And through this fundraiser, we're able to illustrate that. We're able to show them that we have a great level of support from the community, that they are willing to come in and be part of our event through sponsorships, through attendance, through the donation and buying of live and silent auction items. And so being able to, this event has been, it's grown in the nine years I've been here. To the point, this past year, we had between two hundred and twenty-five and two hundred and fifty people there. Pretty much sold out. It was a great experience and we're just thankful that we can come and talk to y'all about being able to utilize a facility that meets the needs of this event. We couldn't, we, there's nowhere else that we can do this where we would be able to accommodate the people that we want to accommodate and be able to offer what we want to offer. And so that's just something for us to come in and be able to pass this on to y'all, let you know what we're doing, let you know how important it is to us and how much we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Court Hill. Any comments, questions from the Commissioners' Court? How many kids in the, in the audience have utilized the services provided at the Boys and Girls Club here in Beville?
How many of y'all have ever been to the Boys and Girls Club?
Thank you for translating. So feel sympathy for my children. I, I just, you know, I love the Boys and Girls Club and I grew up there as well. So I'm so glad that you're here and that you're continuing to carry on that strong legacy.
Appreciate that sort of.
Of community interaction. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lenny. He was speaking before you, Commissioner Poyes. Do you have a second?
I'll have a second.
I'll give you the second. Runner-up, Joe, Commissioner Lenny. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Court Hill.
Gentlemen, thank you once again.
Yes, sir. Agenda item number seventeen, approved expo request for arena fee waiver from Beville Little League for closing ceremonies on Tuesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Mr. Rodriguez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. The, I'm Wally Rodriguez, promotional director of B County Expo Center. The request on the agenda today is from the Beville Little League Association. They, last year, utilized the facility in a last-minute effort because of weather and realized it's perfect. It really makes things work for them. They're not out in the sun with a bunch of parents. They're also gives, the one thing that they noticed is that also gives every child the same amount of limelight. You know, child number sixty-seven gets the same amount of, of, of an audience, or same size of an audience as the second child. Parents aren't leaving, everybody enjoys the entire facility. So it's a covered, open-air arena, so they're able to utilize the facility and they're requesting that we let them do it again. The facility is utilized for only a amount of two to three hours. And so I think it's a great move. I recommend it.
Thank you so much, sir.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Wally. Moving on to agenda item number eighteen, American Rescue Plan, ARP, status and projects. Gentlemen?
Judge, if you would, I'd like to explain a little bit for the, for the audience. We have young folks here that may not be aware of the money that we can.
Certainly, take all the time you need, sir.
What happened, we have.
All the time you need.
We received federal money several months ago, well, several years ago now.
Sir.
And it was up to the court to decide exactly how to spend it. It was several million dollars. So here's this windfall of money, but you have to spend it a certain way or you have to pay it back. So the way the court has done this, they have helped all the fire departments. They helped the Pettis, Tiddon, and Skidmore Water Districts. We're using part of it to build a new emergency management center out behind the Coliseum. And we had some folks that worked straight through during COVID, they, they received some essential worker pay, some extra pay. And we're to the final end of paying out that money. And the court, I know I personally, and the court feels the same way, very, very proud of how we spent it. It wasn't wasted. None of the elected officials received any of this money. Some of the other counties used it in different ways. We feel very comfortable the way we used it. And if you get a chance out of the Coliseum, directly behind the Coliseum, we're building a brand-new building, an emergency management center. It's, how many square feet, twenty-eight thousand square feet?
Just under six.
Twenty-five? Five thousand square feet. And the shell is up now. That was all. Lead out there, walk around, take a look, drive by, take a look. That'll be operational, they're saying, October of this year. So we're real proud of that. We're proud of how we've spent this money. Yes, ma'am?
If I could, I'll give a little bit of a deeper status.
Please.
In April, we had to submit our annual report on ARPA. And we reported about twenty-eight projects. And we have roughly about eight to ten of them that are still active. So the other twenty have been closed, have been paid, have been completed. We are working on the documentation portion. And we have roughly about seventy-two thousand dollars to finish out this year to allocate out of all of that six million dollars that we're given. So we're very tell-end of using and extending all of those.
And Greg, we have to have the money either expended or obligated by the end.
Obligated by the end of December. So we have until now, until December, to allocate that seventy-two thousand dollars, which I imagine we do have a list of projects that we were still kind of working on that could still be utilized for that seventy-two thousand. So we have another ARPA committee meeting that we will have probably in the summer, just to finalize all that details and, but we're right on track. I have no.
By then, we'll know if we're gonna have any cost overruns on that.
Correct. Yes, sir. And that's kind of what we're waiting for.
That's kind of where we're holding on.
It is, yes.
Just this year, let everybody know, we're not giving out the seventy-two thousand right now. We're holding on.
We have an anticipation that it might be used on this building just because of cost overruns, everything is going on. We see it at the grocery store. But once we have an idea of where, what's left over from those projects, then we will begin allocating money in December.
And what you'll see, if you go by that building, on one side next to the big arena, there are a whole lot of doors. That's not the entrance. Those are actually restroom facilities for first responders. In your mind, think about a hurricane coming in on the coast and devastating the whole area, kind of like Hurricane Harvey did a few years ago. That's the main staging area at the Coliseum for the electric companies, for law enforcement, for Parks and Wildlife, for border patrol. They take all their equipment out there. They're working all over the area. They need a place to sleep, they need a place to clean up, to shower. That's what this building is being built for. In case of emergencies, we're gonna be ready.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner Dwyer did a good explanation. Thank you, sir. Good job.
And Commissioner Witt, Commissioner Lenny have been heading up our ARPA committee. It's made up of wonderful and very committed members of our auditor department as well as other stakeholders in the county. They've done an excellent, excellent job with prioritizing and handling the distribution of these funds. So good job, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number nineteen, approved Texas opioid settlement agreements. I don't know how long I'm gonna keep this on as a, as a standing order. There are no settlement agreements to approve, so we will pass on that agenda item. Agenda item number twenty, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office Community Development Block Grant, CBPG. Status and project update. Gentlemen?
Still no, no update. Things are moving good. The positive side of it, the request information has been submitted and turned back, so now we're just in the way and pulling that in. So good news.
Excellent. This is another big bucket of money that has been many years in the making. It passed from the federal government to the state of Texas and the state of Texas came up with a distribution plan to your local councils of governments, who then came up with their own distribution plan for the individual member entities that make up a part of the, this is very governmental. A lot of bureaucracy and a lot of red tape and it's been very cumbersome to deal with. The counties and the cities are patient and diligent and we are certain that our local coastal bend council of governments will get us funded just as quickly as possible. So it's a great opportunity for us to continue to make meaningful improvements to the county with government windfalls. Anything further? Thank you, gentlemen. We have no executive session items on the agenda today? Oh, wait, no.
Yes, we do.
Thank you for stopping. Thank goodness Andy was here. I was about to adjourn. We do have an executive session. So for the, for the members of the audience who may not be familiar with that, before I read out the public notice, just a general idea of what executive session are. In Texas, it's very important, across the United States, it's very important that your government is conducted in an open manner. So such that members of the community understand what government is doing, why we're making decisions that we're making, why they're coming forward, how they're coming forward. And there's all sorts of laws that allow you as an individual citizen to ask and obtain information about and from county government. So generally, we have what's called in Texas, an Open Meetings Act, which means most of our discussion and considerations have to be done in an open session, public, open session available to the public, so that all can see exactly what it is that we are doing. In certain limited exceptions, we can move away from the open meetings default rule and go into what we call closed executive session. That means that everybody in the audience is gonna have to get up and leave and then we're going to talk in private about a matter that is protected from disclosure by Texas law. And so that's what we're about to do right now. So I'll go ahead and read out the public notice. Public notice is given that B County Commissioners' Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed on the agenda pursuant to the authority granted under the Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one. Immediately before any executive session, the specific section or sections of the Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one, that provide statutory authority will be announced. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners' Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. So we can't vote in executive session. We have to come back out to the public and vote in the public before everybody, but we can make, we can have our discussion held in private. So I'll read off the agenda item. Agenda item number twenty-one, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven four, Personnel Matters, Department of Labor Change Exempt Classification. At this point in time, it is ten oh two a.m. We're going to go ahead and go in.